Oh, the view was fun.
From the hotel room or from the studio?
Welcome to the, oh, not ready. Welcome to the East, welcome to the March 5th, 2019 East Bridgewater School Committee Public Hearing on the FY20 School Department's Budget. At this time, I would take a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the slide of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming this evening. We appreciate it. And thank you to our administrative team for all of your hard work in putting this budget together. And thank you to the Budget Subcommittee for your time and effort. And I'd just like to say something before we begin. Our first priority is the educational welfare of our children. We recognize that this also involves the interest of the taxpayers. We follow a sound budget development process that has been established to ensure the annual operating budget accurately reflects our goals and objectives. It is important to note that the budget that you will hear presented today does not include any extras. The budget presented today only takes into consideration what is necessary to operate our schools at their current levels. We have 343 faculty and staff employed to educate our 2,252 students. For my fifth consecutive year on the school committee and my third year as chair, we are asking the town for less money than we need in order to grow and advance. And that's all I have on that. And I would like to thank the town for your support. And at this, and at the end, there will be time for questions as soon as the presentation is over. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Legault for our presentation.
I'll just ask the committee, please take a seat in the floor.
Good evening, and welcome to the 2020 Budget Presentation of the East Bridgewater Public Schools. I'm Liz Legault, I'm the Superintendent of Schools. I'm very proud to lead East Bridgewater Public Schools each and every day. I want to thank Dr. Gina Williams, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, wonderful partner and has created a tremendous budget presentation along with me tonight and along with our Business Administrator, John Shea. This evening, as we begin, you'll start to see how we, how we follow our budget, how we create the budget, how we create the monies for the budget. And what we do is we follow the strategic plan of the district. You might have seen, each school has a school improvement plan which follows the district improvement plan. And we like to say it's great to be a Viking. One of our favorites, Mrs. McStowe, has retired from the Central School this year and she was queen for the day if anybody got to see those pictures and got over to Central School to our pre-K 1-2 building. These are some of our pre-K 1-2 students here. This is our new web girls hockey team. And as you know, Mr. Ponte with, I think that's the Jazz Knight and his jazz band. This is our strategic plan at a glance. We have four pillars: curriculum instruction, social-emotional wellness, professional development, and technology. Those are the four areas that we concentrate on each and every day here in East Bridgewater. It's what our professional development concentrates on, it's what I concentrate on, and it's what our principals concentrate on. Each school's strategic plan for their individual buildings pillar off of these. So as we develop a comprehensive pre-K to 12 aligned curriculum based upon current research, and we try to deliver the curriculum through a use of rigorous and well-rounded instruction. Social-emotional wellness to foster the social-emotional and healthy development of students, to provide, and professional wellness to provide all staff with a comprehensive professional development, opportunities that are designed to support pre-K through 12 education, community and their commitment to educate and inspire every student to achieve personal and academic excellence. Technology to provide all learners engaging learning experiences, experiences utilizing technology while providing educators the capacity to create those opportunities. Technology is a tool, it's a support. It's not everything, it's part of our program. These are the four areas that we concentrate on each and every day. Where we are today for the FY19 budget, this is what we are currently working on. Our salary budget is $17,197,823. Our non-salary budget, $3,122,378. Our total school budget, $20,320,201. If we include our busing, which has remained the same, which we renegotiated when I took over Superintendent four years ago, has been $936,000. At this time, busing, we are out to bid for a new transportation contract, and so we do not have a finalized number because we do not have a bid at this time. The total right now that we're working on is $21,256,000. What we did with our funding for this year, we spent $150,000 on a new math program, K-6, Ready Math and Preck, 7-12, IXL and Pearson. Dr. Williams will talk a little bit more about this in a few minutes. Our data team is using MAP, data, MCAS data, and DIBELS data to make sure that we are providing structural supports for our teachers and also supporting, supporting the curriculum that they bring into the district. I can't use that one, so I need, I need something without it. So, good.
This one is wireless, I think.
Continued professional development. We spent $50,000 to continue to increase our professional development for all teachers, to provide them with information and provide them with instruction and how to support their instructional strategies inside the classroom. Inclusive Practices Academy, the Book Club, and we're at about 175 course offerings. New hires this year, we have a full-time IT Director. We provided another behavior specialist for the Mitchell School. We provided a STEAM specialist in a STEAM room at the Mitchell School, and we continue to fill and replace retirement slots. Any teacher that has retired in the last four years since I have been here has been replaced. We have not let any space go unreplaced. This year, we negotiated four collective bargaining agreements: custodial, administrative assistance, instructional assistance, and assistant principals. This, this year currently, and we'll talk about this in a minute, we are negotiating at this time with the EBEA. Those are our teachers, our faculty. We started a girls hockey program with West Bridgewater. We've got upgrades at the Mitchell School for the security cameras. We've purchased new band uniforms. We're working on a new time and attendance system. And we've purchased new library books. Our new accomplishments, we created a sped reserve fund last year, last year's town meeting. MSBAARP, that's the Massachusetts Building Authority at the Central School Boiler. We are putting in a new boiler which will go in this summer. We started working on the Boiler Room last summer. This year, it is ready to go. We are out with our architects right now, working on to go out to bid for putting this huge boiler system together, and they put it together actually in the room, and it'll be done over the summer. Some new grants, the Dairy Council grant, I think it was, received $10,000 from the Dairy Council, collaborative grant between EB and the police in schools, the new website that is ADA compliant, and the EB Outreach Coalition. We're working very diligently with this group, Susan Silva, Police Chief Allen, and the Coalition Group from Brockton. Gina, what is that? Brockton Area Prevention. They meet once a month here, we met the other day, we're working a lot. We also have our outreach program for students. We're working on vaping, we're working on social-emotional awareness, we're working on drug prevention, working on a lot of, just our kid in need program. We're trying to reach out to our community and to our students and to work together to create a community in a school district that children feel respected and they feel that safe when they come to school and that they can speak with us. And that we also reach out to homes and families and parents if they need our help as well. Our average class sizes. This is at Central School. We are, we, about 20 to 21 students, grades one and two. Mitchell ELA, around the same. We've brought these class sizes down over the last few years. Average class size of junior, senior high school. We continue to add teachers. We added teachers in the seventh and eighth grade. We added four teachers last year so that we could help try to bring these class sizes down, and we continue to work on that. Sure, you can ask me a question at any time. Sure. I, I can tell you that I had asked the principal about that, we are in discussion about that. I was not aware of that until later, probably. This is what, this is the average that we have. This comes from the average.
So if you have advanced placement classes that have, let's just say 35 to 40 kids, how do you get to an average of 22? Right, you gotta have classes up there that...
We might have some classes of 16. I can tell you this.
You have to have a lot of classes of 16.
And there are some classes that are in the APs. I can tell you I'm working on it with the principal right now, we are looking at, looking at a new schedule.
Is AP in there, Liz, because it's only ELA?
Yes.
I have a question, I don't know if you know where those averages come from exactly. I know that some teachers in high school offer like independent studies which are only a small yet four kids, kind of on their own because I didn't know where it comes from. Is that part of that number? Do you know?
Go ahead, Mr. Shea. But this, this came directly from our guidance, right here at the high school. But I can certainly, I, there are some things that have gone through the schedule, and I know you're asking about AP classes and pinpointing those classes. Right. And this is an average of what I'm getting, and this is, I asked for the averages, this is what I received. I could come back with you, if you give me your email address, I'll email you tomorrow morning and I'll tell you exactly how many, how many courses we are running each period for each grade for each teacher on a, on a daily basis, which will give you a better printout.
One potential thing that could be helpful probably is at least for the 2019 numbers, is to break those out basically in the histogram of buckets, so 20 to 22, 22, 24, and that would actually reveal the details about some of the higher classes. Because otherwise, this might give a false presentation, I mean, it might, not a negative in a way, but it could potentially artificially decrease the perception of class sizes across in the different areas.
I certainly understand what you're, what you're saying. I look at it, I look at it for the number of FTEs, for the number of faculty members I have in each grade, for the number of courses that we're offering, 9 through 12, we're off, or from 7 through 12, and I try, I try to give an overall picture of an average. This is what it came back as, this is what we get from DESI as well. If you look at the, our new state report card when it comes back, they'll, it'll pretty much coincide with what we come up with in average. But I can certainly look into those AP classes. I did hear those were high. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out why, why it's like that as well, but I am looking into it. And as you know, at Central School, these stay the same because the students don't switch from math class to English class to social studies class to science class. They have one teacher for first grade, one teacher for second grade.
Do you know why the, the Y-axis over there on the last one is duplicated? Does, it's making it, sorry, two, two spots back.
Over here?
Yeah.
It's decimals, so it could be that 18, 18.5, 19, that's all. It just, it's not showing you the decimal point.
Dr. Williams?
So this slide here shows a representation of our curriculum review cycle, and you can see the, on the left-hand side, the content areas that we're focusing on across the top, the years of the focus, and making sure that we're spending time giving needs assessment to each of the content areas to figure out where we are with the content that we're working with as far as resources, professional development training, and certainly if at the state level, any changes have been made in the standards for each particular grade level. So after spending a year researching and conducting a needs assessment, we would then start to look at potential resources, potential programs, and that would be our, our pilot slash purchase year. So that at the end of the school year, we'd be looking to budget money for the following year within that content area. And then we'd have years of implementation, before then we'd come back around again to look how that's working for us and move forward. So looking at this, you can see this year, we're in the content area of wellness, which is a huge undertaking in the sense that it's looking at not only our physical education classes and our health classes, but it's also looking at from the nursing perspective, from the food service perspective, from the guidance perspective, the wellness and how we're caring for not only the physical, but the social-emotional health and wellness of not only our students but our staff because we know they are the ones that are working directly with our students, so we need to make sure we're mindful of that. The Massachusetts Frameworks for Health and Wellness had not been updated for 20 years. They were working off of 1999 frameworks, and this year they decide they're going to update them. So their timeframe of when those will be complete are a little off from where we're at right now. They're looking at the fall for those to be completed, so we've kind of deviated a little bit, that we're really focusing on the social-emotional health and wellness of our students, and we're putting recommendations forward for next year. As far as the PE component and health classes, we're going to stall that a little bit, and we're starting to work with our social studies so that we're not going to overburden the budget. Next year, having PE, health, social studies, and language, we're going to start having those conversations which we've already began with social studies, knowing that those frameworks have just changed. But by the end of this year, we'll be sharing with the school committee an action plan for recommendations and changes that we're making to our health and wellness, not only our curriculum, but also the programs and the services that we're going to be providing for our students. So we have this curriculum review cycle that keeps us very loyal and faithful to those content areas, making sure that none are left out or left behind because ELA and math tend to trump them a lot of times, knowing that those are two major areas. We want to make sure that we're spending time and effort and energy focused on all of the areas. So this shows you where we are each year in the review.
Wait, just address the science, technology, and math piece for a second?
Yep.
So, seeing science, technology, I guess, my first, before I take a look at a couple of the blocks there, I don't see where East Bridgewater has a robust STEM program. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I've, I've seen zero in any exposure to any engineering. Higher maths are, we just talked about class size, 40. And when a child has to go off campus to fit the class into hit of her schedule, that's, I would consider that failure. And then to look to see that we just went through a pilot purchase program for 2016 and 2017 and implemented it last year, and we don't have a STEM program that we can refer to and say, that's a shining example of what we do. Am I missing that? So I'm just wondering what the pilot purchase process is and how do we miss a segment that's so huge like STEM?
So when we go through the review, we're looking at the content and the courses that we are currently offering. Certainly, if we're going to extend or expand on that, there's going to be additional budgetary requirements in order to do that.
So, you can't, I mean, I'm talking for something that does not exist, but we have a STEM program.
Right, so we've started that at the Mitchell School where they have now the STEAM lab, and students are getting that exposure to early engineering skills. In our tech ed department here, they're covering that to some extent, to the extent we would want them to do that, no, we still need to grow that. But when we're looking at this curriculum review cycle, we're looking at, I think the most we've spent is $150,000 across the district in that area. If we were going to create the STEM programs that we would want to be able to have for our students, we'd be looking at well beyond what we're allocating for curriculum review and resources.
And that lies, there lies, I think, I was saving this point for further on, but that is the perfect example of what I was looking for, is that we keep, or I keep hearing and seeing, well, we've asked for this amount of money, or we're not going to get this amount of money, or it's 3.2. But what I've never seen is a solid, even a one sheet white paper that says to accomplish this, to get ourselves caught up with other schools, because a STEM program, and I hope I'm preaching to the choir here, but the STEM program goes across almost every avenue of not only this curriculum, but where somebody may work in the future, whether in a school and then eventually work, or go over to the workforce. This, it's just, it's passing us by. And so my point is, is that, okay, it would, it's going to take far beyond what we've been able to budget. Well, what is that dollar amount when you go out to purchase a major home appliance? When you settle on something, now, the kind of salesperson may say, oh, no, you need to spend 2.6% more to get a better one. Well, what's the better? What am I getting? So I don't under, I mean, I do, but 2.6% increase, 3.7% increase, whatever the number is, what am I actually getting other than just more? Because that is, really, is disappointing to see. And to see that gap in the timeline, if I was to talk to a parent that was in eighth grade, seventh grade, looking at high school, I would tell them to run. If you wanted to excel, if you have a student that is going to excel in any of these areas, I would, I would look elsewhere.
If I, if I, go ahead.
I think to, you mentioned that the implementation phase for some of these across the district was an average of $150,000. That's the answer, is the funding. And so I think that speaks to the broader question, that is certainly so, no lack of desire, I can imagine. Like you said, preaching to the choir.
Does that, does that number really have, you know, why that is tied to it? Is this what we're going to get for 150,000?
So, let me just say this, you're preaching to the choir. Believe me. And I don't want to keep going back, but I came in four, four years ago going in, I fit here, we were $2 million in the hole. We came, we came back, hold on, we came back. We got professional development back, and we started a curriculum cycle. We went as robust, as quickly, and as vivaciously as we could to go for, we started with science. We figured they were lacking in materials. They were lacking in robust curriculum and instructional materials for the teachers. They were, we were lacking in a teacher. We tried to put those things in as quickly as possible. We piloted a program, Mr. Silva here at the high school helped us, worked that, went all the way down to the elementary school with Dr. Williams, all the way to Mitchell School. What do we need? How do we need to implement programs? How do we need to keep them going? If I could get an additional 6% a year, I certainly would. Because the 2% budget, the 2%, 2.6% budget and the 3.5%, those are the numbers they said, you're absolutely right. They're, they're maintained.
So I just wanted you to understand, I'm not blaming you. I think, I think that the Board of Select members failed you, actually, more importantly, failed the kids, Finance Committee, Account Manager, and then even us as parents who said, we have failed the school system. Be the position that we are right now, because nothing will change. And if, if it's not going to change, my position still would be to a seventh, eighth, or ninth grade parent or student, parent of a student. I'm not seeing anything that's going to change. I was, if you want your child to excel, run.
And it's true. Hold on, did you get the answer at the end? Let us, let's, I want to get through the budget so you can, so you can see the whole thing. If you can, if you can, just, because it keeps us on. I think the biggest, our big question, or it's not a question, it's what's important? And how do we get everybody to understand what's important in the district and in the community? I think everything's important, but really, you know, what's going to, what's going to be our longevity here? It's our kids. It's our kids. We went for kindergarten, we put full-day kindergarten in. That was a huge step forward. I thought at that point, okay, here we go. Huge step. And it is, and it is a huge step. But we also have ninth graders and seventh graders, and seventh and eighth graders that have social-emotional anxiousness, aches each and every day, ninth graders going through early adolescence, late puberty, jumbled heads, you know? They're not thinking just of... late puberty, jumbled heads, you know? They're not thinking just of math and science on that day. So there's so much to play. But we are trying, and we are trying to work with the town, and there is a lot of things going. We're third from the bottom in per pupil expenditure. You know, that's, to me, the most embarrassing part. We do well with what we have, and I think we're doing well with what we have, and I think that we're trying to, to do better with what we have. But you're right, because it's not just about salaries. Salaries are important. I believe in public education. My parents, mother 35 years, father 34 years. Salary is important, but it's not the only thing that needs to go into a budget. These kids are more important to me than just, salary is important. My teachers are very important. I try to treat them as very well. But the kids are important. They need more. We need more individualized educational-
Right. But I also want to be clear on the fact that we are addressing all of the standards within the frameworks. So the students aren't missing out on learning particular standards. They're learning, they possibly are missing out on the way they can go about learning it. But we're not, not teaching them the standards, because we don't have curriculum and resources to do that. There could be other resources that would enhance what we're doing and be more engaging, but they're not going without learning those standards.
And, you know, the word standard, the way that I just heard that, that's the minimum bar. That's what, that's what we're doing. We're getting the standards done, so we're checking off the box, and we're getting them out in four years. And I know that, you know, it is, again, it all goes back to what your folks have available to work with. And-
Right. We want to, we want to be able to address everything we need to, and also stay within the constraints that we've been given.
And I also like to say, my, for the instructional piece, do we want to just keep swimming across, or do we want to swim deep? What do we want to do for our kids? Does it matter if we get through a science book, or does it matter if I truly understand and dig deep? And to Gina's point, right now, DESI, the Department of Education, Secondary Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, we have to follow curriculum standards. We have to follow the standards to get our students through. They still have to pass the MCAS. So we try to develop a program, try to develop our teachers, to have instructional strategies to work with our students each and every day, so that they pass the MCAS, because that is, that's the, right now, the state standard of the testing component to graduate a four year high school, public high school in Massachusetts in the Commonwealth. What we need to do is, we need to decide, what do we want to do? Do we want to swim deeper, do we want to just keep swimming across? And I, that's to your point, is, what are we doing? We're trying to, we're trying to make sure that the standards are hit. We're trying to make sure that science, technology, math, health and wellness, social studies, ELA, and your art math, and tech ed, and physical education, they're all important, because that has been helped and guided. It's all important. Everything's important. But we are certainly trying, and we're trying to get there. But you're right. Being third from the bottom in PPE doesn't help us. Go ahead, John.
This is a list of the offerings that we have provided for our staff members. I think we've mentioned before in the past, that in past years, funding was provided to reimburse teachers for courses that they elected to take. And now, we have captured that money so that we can now send teachers to training that align with the philosophy and the strategic planning and goals that we have set as a district, so that everybody's focused and aligned and consistent with the training that they're receiving. So this is a list of this current year, the offerings and the trainings that teachers have expressed interest in going to, that the district has funded.
Are these outside, you know?
They're a mix. They're a mix. Some of them are part of PD days, some of them are after school offerings that we've provided, and then some of them are ones that we've sent people to.
But they're not towards the accreditation or-
So with some of these, if they're being offered out of district for an additional cost, the teacher could pay for the college credit for it. We're paying for the registration for them to attend the training.
Is there certificate credit, not college?
Right. Their professional development points towards their recertification of their license.
So the FY '20 increase for what and for why? We want to continue to maintain manageable class size. We are trying to get there.
We, it's, it's a long haul, and we're trying to increase the number of FTEs or faculty members, so that we can maintain manageable class size. Enhance support for social emotional needs with three new social workers from the North River Collaborative. New district-wide wellness action plan. New platform to bring together academic and social emotional data to better advise teachers and administration on early warning signs. Continue to maintain and upgrade technology for both students and teachers to support the NEASC accreditation five-year success plan. And we are looking at getting a security guard for the Mitchell School, Mitchell School behavior specialist, and a .50 half-time ESL teacher, because we are increasing our students who are ELL learners. The, this, the security guards, some people I think are asking, "Where is this?" The, the high school has a security guard. Our vestibule at the Mitchell School, I do not think is safe. Once you were to go into the vestibule at the Mitchell School, it's a wide open area where there's no stopping. At this time, I have spoken to, we are going to bring it up again to Capitol, our facilities manager, Brian Kylie, myself, John Shea, have discussed this several times this year. The amount that it would cost to rebuild the vestibule would be a push for us to get in funding. So I want to make sure that we have a security guard to stop, use our lobby guard information system that we already have in place, but we'll pull the lobby guard out for the security guard, and have the security guard be able to check people's credentials before they come into the building, before it gets into where the administrative assistants and principals' areas are, or even to ask to take a student out. And where we're going tomorrow, right now, we are looking at $17,699,604 for salary, and non-salary is $3,180,291, which brings us up to a school budget of $20,879,895. Again, busing, is that, we kept that at $936,000. We are, on March 19th, we will be able to give responses to the bus bid. The bids have been out. As of, as of today, I believe we have received five inquiries from five different companies all over the state, as far as western Massa, way out western Massachusetts. We have been working with a transportation, transportation company for several years, Lucini Bus Lines, who has worked with us favorably here, has done a nice job since I have been here with our student body, and works with us to do the right thing for our students. But right now, we have five companies who have bid for our transportation, or will be bidding, they've asked for more information. FY 2020 and to FY 2019 budget difference, I'll discuss this, and then I think John's going to jump in a little bit. The salary's at $501,781. The non-salary increased to 57,913 differential. The school budget, $559,694. We kept busing out of this number at this time. The total increase that we are asking is $559,694. Yeah. At the end, I'm going to talk about that, exactly what it is at 2.75. These are our budget assumptions at this time. Develop a needs-based budget. Maintains current class sizes. Meets contractual obligations at this time. The EBA, teacher or collective bargaining agreement currently under negotiations. Bus transportation contract is currently out to bid. We're due on March 16th. And this includes special education tuition cost increases, but zero increase in number of sped, special education students, students with IEPs, Individual Education Plans. So, we have been, for the last few years, I've been giving projections. Last year, I gave a four-year projection. The year before, I gave a four-year projection. At the 2020 budget projection presented in 2017, at FinCom, Public Hearing, and Board of Selectmen, 2018 budget meetings, we said that we would be at $615,660. The 2020 budget projection presented in 2018, at FinCom, Public Hearing, and Board of Selectmen, at the 2019 budget meetings, last year, came in, we were at $609,606. So for the last few years, we've been coming in and saying, "We're going to need this, this money to maintain level services." This, right now, 2020 budget is currently at $559,694. So this should not be, or it has not been a surprise, we have been forthcoming over the last few years, by saying to our selectmen, our FinCom, Capital Projects, we've been working with our liaisons from FinCom, who have really been part of the process with us this year. We have two new liaisons that come down and have met with John Shea and myself, I believe, three times, or two times down here, and then John sent some information to them the other day. But these numbers, we have been letting the town in and letting them know we would be around this type, these types of figures within here. So there should, there have been no surprises.
So who's budgeted for that a lot more? How about that slide?
That's, that's where we are today. That's what I'm, that's what we are asking for. That's what we're asking for. So, in 2018, we were at a 4.31%, $815,957. That's the year that we added kindergarten. In 2019, we are at 578,854, still underneath the 3% budget at 2.93%. And this year, again, we are under 3% at 2.75% at $559,694. Mr. Shea, if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah. Again, I, I think one thing we'd like to add is, in 2019, the town asked us to come in with a 1.5% budget. And in 2020, the town has asked us to come in with a 2% budget. So I, I think we're trying to do the best we can, and work with the town to give the students the best that we can. We'd love to come in at 6% and, and create new classes, and, but, you know, I think it's, it's important that the people here and the people on TV understand, you know, we're working within the constraints given to us by the town. And we're fighting, and I think we'd love for everyone here to fight with This, this slide is our Chapter 70 funding. And it may be a little complicated, but when you get to the, the green line, the increase in Chapter 78, the funding from the state has been lacking to all, all schools in, in the state. Projected, there's projections out there that we are underfunded by the state, by the, to the tune of about $1.5 million a year. Now, the governor's budget has taken into account the fact that we have been underfunded, and has increased our Chapter 78 by $203,000, which is, which is great news to the town and the, and the school. Now, I, I worked with a consultant to, to try to estimate, we're two years down the road, 2021, because what the governor's budget does, it increases our rates for special education and employee benefits. And there's a seven-year phasing that the governor proposed in the, in the 2020 budget. Assuming those rates continue to increase with that seven-year phasing, and our enrollment stays pretty much the same, and our student demographics remain the same, I've projected in 2021, we may actually see an increase of $467,000 in our Chapter 70 funding. Again, it, it is a little risky to, with the state government and regulations.
Do you have a, or like, for example?
No, that, this, the Chapter 78 you see here, $10,812,907. That is the funding that the town gets from the state for our education. It doesn't have to be used for special ed.
The act of on the mark, or like, specialized, or-
No.
The DHL?
No, no.
No, it's under the chapter 78.
It's very difficult to understand, understand it, Chapter 70, but we hope, we're very, the Super Intents Association, I've been at many meetings over the, the course of the year. We are confident that these, that this, this proposal by the, by the governor will be pushed through the House and through the Senate. We will not know till later, probably the latest in, in the summer, looking for July 1st. That's, that's the problem, when you are trying to work within budget, the confines of a budget, or the constraints, when you're working and trying to negotiate a good contract with teachers. It's, it's difficult. Public education always takes that, that hit. But we are trying our darndest to move ourselves and continue to move ourselves forward.
So these next set of slides really needs to drive the decisions that we're going to make moving forward. The state has recently changed the MCAS. We now are giving next-generation MCAS, because they've realized that after having the MCAS test for so long, districts have figured out what they need to do in order to get their students at a proficient or advanced rating. So now, they've made the test a little bit more rigorous, but they've come up with a new accountability system. In the past, districts were leveled, level one to level five, one being the best, five being those districts in receivership. Now, they've come up with accountability ratings, and really, it's a rating of needs assistance, or does not need assistance. But within those ratings of needing or not needing assistance, they also have broken it down even further, whether you're partially meeting, meeting, or exceeding. And they're not just taking the MCAS into account, whereas before, they were just using MCAS information. Now, they're looking at your data from many different perspectives. One being attendance, knowing that students need to be in school in order to learn. So they're tracking the attendance rates of our students within the district. This is what it looks like on a district view. If we look at the next one. Do you have the clicker? Oh. This is just for the junior, senior high school, and this is chronic absenteeism. If you can see there, 20% in 2018 for our school, with the state average is at 13.2. That's a huge issue, and that's what made us realize that social emotional wellness needs to be looked at. Why do we have so many children that are not coming to school? And to be labeled as chronic, it's 10% of the school year. They're absent 18 or more days from school. And I don't think East Bridgewater has more medically fragile children than other districts, with, other districts within Massachusetts. So certainly, there's reason why we have such a high absenteeism at the junior, senior high school. And we know engagement and social emotional wellness are two big issues that we are looking at.
So only one fifth of our students are in high school, or is it more than that?
According to that data from last year. The other thing that the report cards look at, they look at graduation rates, they look at students that are choosing to go to two-year colleges, four-year colleges, and it's nice to see that our graduation rate is increasing because time and effort has been spent on reducing dropout rates, working with students to try to come up with alternative plans so that they are completing their high school education and getting their diplomas. In addition, and I didn't include all the slides, I have put on the district website our entire district report card, and your high school and Mitchell School and Central School administration should be pushing those out. If you did not receive those today, you should receive those tomorrow, but they're all on the website as well. It talks not only about student attendance, student discipline, teacher qualifications, and it's looking at two things. It used to only look at teacher qualifications from the perspective of are they licensed in the area that they're teaching. Now, they're looking at it from a level of the experience of a teacher, because they're saying, obviously, the more experienced teachers are, the better prepared they are to meet the needs of our students. And, you know, sometimes, that does have a budgetary component to it. When we're looking to hire teachers, sometimes, we feel we're within constraints of looking for newer or more novice teachers, knowing that they're going to come in at a lower salary rate, and the state is actually watching that to see the percentage of experienced teachers in a school building and in a district versus those that are experienced. And they define that as three or more years of teaching is considered experienced. You know, certainly, the big things that the report cards are showing is our achievement and now our growth. Our growth is also being measured to the point that for every student that performs on an MCAS exam, they're looking at every other student across the state that scored that exact same score the previous year, and where those students are as compared to the students in our district and how much they've grown. The MAP growth assessment that we brought on a little over two years ago does the same exact thing, but it gives it to us three times a year. So, we need a better idea and understanding of where our students are before we get to the MCAS, and we're not waiting for MCAS data to determine whether our students have grown over the course of the year. So, the MAP assessment is very important. We encourage parents to ask their child's teacher about their progress on the MAP. The MAP identifies what they're ready to learn, not what they've achieved or what they can already do, what are they ready to learn, so that teachers can make those decisions about where should I be taking these students now, and not just teaching something for the sake of teaching it, but really teaching it because this student is ready for it. And that may mean students are ready to go beyond what other students in the classroom are able to do. And then, as I mentioned to you, the other indicators as well. The other piece that the report card does take into consideration is the funding. So, that is part of our accountability as well. So, it's about the students, it's about the teachers, it's about the curriculum, it's about the funding that we provide for our students. Yes. So, now, with accountability, they have determined a rating, and we're at 45% is our rating. In order for us to be considered meeting or higher, we should be at 75 or above. Now, the state has, obviously, changed the accountability and has set lots of districts back. Most districts, obviously, they're looking at that 50% and where districts are going to go from there. But they're expecting that districts will work to close that gap and hit the target of improvement to get to that 75%. So, they're going to be expecting each year that that 45% keeps increasing until we have ourselves at a level of 75% or higher. And then, the last slide is what I spoke to you about as far as our classification. The difficult part for us is, you know, we're in a precarious position here where we have a lot of work to do, but we're not going to get that assistance and that intervention that a lot of districts are getting that have that more focused and targeted support that they've been labeled for. So, what we've done as a district is we've taken it upon ourselves to do those same things that those other districts are being forced to do. And I think in a previous slide, it was mentioned, the Inclusive Practices Academy and Multi-Tier Systems, those two academies are being put on by the state. Districts are being told that if you're in the area of requiring assistance, you are going to go through this three-year program. We've decided to self-fund it, and we are putting three teams of teachers, one from each of the school buildings, a total of 24 of us, that are going through these academies right now, which involve professional development, they involve graduate-level courses that we'll be providing for our teachers so that we can really reduce the barriers that are there right now for our students and why they're not either achieving at the levels they need to or growing at the levels. Because we do have students that are high-performing in achievement, however, their growth is not showing that they're being pushed to the levels that they are capable of being pushed to. So, those are some of the things that we're doing, although we're not getting the financial assistance from the state to do that, we're investing as a district into that over the next several years. And as I said, those report cards, the school and district report cards are on the website, so you can look. And unfortunately, they're not in a printout format, they're all dropdown menus, and the state has told us that they will be getting us printable formats, but at this point in time, they all are electronic. So, they've assigned points in all the categories. So, actually, if we go back... Yeah, and this is, if you look at the left-hand side, those are the non-high school grades, so those are grades three through eight, all students, and then our lowest-performing students. And then, the last two columns are all students at the high school level nine through 12, and then our lowest-performing students. So, they've assigned points, obviously, at the high school level because we're looking at high stakes and students needing to graduate, they've put more weight into high school than they have in the lower grades, so it's a 40-60 split. But as you can see, there are areas that we received zero points. Those areas that have no numbers, it's insufficient data, we don't have enough students. Obviously, on the left-hand side, there's nothing for high school completion because grades three through eight don't have that information. But if there's an insufficient number of students for them to get a rating, they've left it blank. And unfortunately, when you look at the Central Schools' report card, there's a lot of that because they don't have MCAS. So, there's nothing under achievement for Central School. And so, that's why Central School is heavily relying on their DIBELS assessment and their MAP assessment, so that they can still be using data to drive some of the decisions that are being made. I think first and foremost, the growth is something that I think we have been ignoring, and the fact that when we have a set of students who are performing well, we've sort of, and I don't want to say left them alone, but our focus and our attention has been on our underperforming students, to get them at a level where it's benchmarked, so that we can say that they are passing MCAS, they are graduating. I think where we've lacked is paying attention to the needs of all students, so those students who are ready to perform at higher levels. And now that the state is watching to see that all students are making progress and growing, we need to be just as mindful of those students who are ready to take on more rigorous content. So, and to me, that's something that we don't necessarily need more funding, we need to be able to reallocate some of the resources that we have right now that are dedicated their focus and attention to, working with students who are considered underperforming, but they're not special needs. And this is the conversation that we've had over the past couple of years, that we need to empower our teachers with strategies and techniques to be able to break down barriers for students and not having students being referred for special education when they're not disabled.
Or if that does at the cost of something else.
Right, so, it's a matter of looking at, like, what do we do first? You know, the cat and mouse here, do we, you know, do this to help this, do we do this? We obviously need to be doing things simultaneously because we can't let go of one until it's ready to be self-sustaining. And if we, at this point, are going to say, "We're going to take these resources and reallocate them," we're not in a position to be able to do that at this moment in time. But like, as I said, with the training that we're providing for our teachers, we want to get them in a position where they can better serve our students within the classroom so that we're not pulling those resources from other places in order to satisfy the academic needs of our lowest-performing students. But that's all time and training. So, they're going to be expecting that every year, we're moving, and they'll report whether we have hit the target for improvement, whether we have declined, and they'll report in every sub-area. They haven't determined at this point, you know, what's the ramification for not moving in that upward trend, other than the potential that the district would then be looked at by the state as a district that needs to have state coming in and looking at the assistance and interventions that are required. But, you know, to look at, and you can look, if you go on the DESI site, you can look at all the districts in Massachusetts, and even as the superintendent and I did that, the majority of them are in that partially-meeting category, and it was deliberate, to some extent, by the state to say, you know, "We're going to reset the clock so that we can then get the state of Massachusetts to be pushing even further than what we've been doing." So, they didn't set this accountability up so that they could show, you know, "Oh, look at Massachusetts, we're at, you know, 75% or higher." They want us to constantly be on top as a state, so they're going to make sure that they keep pushing us back. Once we reach those levels, they'll reset the clock so that we then have to work harder to get back up to those levels that we were at with the legacy test.
And he has addressed that, and that one of the ways he's addressed that is pushing in the governor and pushing in the state to help us with the Chapter 70 funding, along with the superintendents to move the districts and to try to get into, and to move us up into that 75%. I believe we continue to move forward and continue to go up this slope, resetting or recalibrating how they identify us and classify us. You're always going to slide down a little bit, and you're always going to restart and recalibrate, like Dr. Williams said. I feel fortunate that we are going to be on the upward swing. We're not alone in this, but that doesn't make East Bridgewater any different than our counterparts around us in the South Shore, North Shore, Western Mass, these... We have, you know, schools in Western Mass who still don't have any technology because they can't get technology into Western Mass way far out. And so, we're better off than that, but we still have a long ways to go. So, I think we're all working and moving forward. But to know that we have a commissioner that is pushing with us is certainly a support. This new website, this is really, just to give it some information to you, we purchased this, we really want to just be transparent with the community on what we're doing in education, what's happening.
In our town, this website is called ClearGov, it is on our website here at the district. They pull all of their information from our end-of-the-year report, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the revenue that we'll speak about, that you can see if you go on and fool around on the website and move around into funding expenditures, you'll find out students, employees, test scores, state aid, the Department of Revenue, they pull and extract all of our information from our end-of-the-year report from that as well when it comes to funding. John, can you... This is what it looks like on our district website. If you go to our financial overview, this is current.
There's a lot of different... Sure. Yep. So, this is our 2018 data, but what this website does, it takes all of the school districts in the state and will compare how we are doing compared to other school districts. Right now, the 2018 state data is not in there, it's only our data. So, but if I click on 2017 expenditures, it shows what was spent on education in 2017. And you can click on whether it's school committee, whether it's the funds allocated to the town, by the town to us, that would be employee benefits and insurance and things like that. It also shows you what we spent out of our grants, out of our athletic fund, school lunch, and other revolving accounts. But if I just stay on government funds, because that's the total, you can scroll down and you can see instructional services, this is the per pupil, there's a lot of talk about per pupil expenditure, but this is our per pupil expenditure for instructional services. And it gives you an explanation of what exactly is included in that category. And you can view the breakdown, but right now, I'll view the analysis. And it shows you how we compare in per pupil expenditure for this category, instructional services. It compares us to other light towns, and it compares us to the state average. So, you can see, we're here, West Bridgewater, Pembroke, Norton, Midway, Abington, and why does it, we can select any peer group. Right now, this is including the Lighthouse Group, and it'll give you some demographics of those other towns. So, it's similar towns with average household income, total number of students, so we try to compare ourselves to other similar towns. So, I think this is, this information, this website takes all the information from the state, and I think it gives you a good graphical representation of how we compare to other towns.
Just to jump on with John, if you go onto this website, if you go to our website, it's right up in front, it's right on the main page, you just push, this is, I think, "View Now," push on that, and you'll get right to this website. It takes a while, you can just continue to click on things, it's very easy, it's really self-explanatory, and you can go through and continue to click in different areas and find out where we are compared against.
find out where we are compared against other towns close to us. I call this the Lighthouse Group, we're, both Dr. Williams and I are part of the Lighthouse Association. We go to the Superintendent's Association for the Lighthouse, Gina goes to the Assistant Superintendents in that group, and those groups are in the South Shore. And we discuss education with other South Shore schools on a monthly basis. But this, this website, or company, ClearGov, is starting to work with many of us so that we can get information out to our communities and to our parents to show you what's happening between schools and towns, and where we rank. I think Teresa just said we, 319 out of 320. And I think we, I think we might have moved up one, I think it might be 318 out of 320. But...
[inaudible]
Right. But that is, but you can go through this, and it'll tell you that we're 17% lower than similar districts. So, go through it, you can always call us, always ask questions, but this will, this will help you figure out what's happening with us and other school districts that are like us.
[inaudible]
Yes.
Oh, I think it's [inaudible] chosen not to use, but...
I don't...
[inaudible] At this time.
Yeah, I do the school. Right, I'm the schools.
Great to see that.
Oh, naturally, great to see.
Great to see.
What are these we have there?
It's a transparent way for us to talk. It's, we're not hiding anything, there's nothing to hide, so...
It lends credibility to saying, "You as a superintendent, Gina as a assistant superintendent, the six elected committee members say," when we speak about these issues. The numbers back us up.
Right.
Nobody can argue the point that we are one of the lowest-funded districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The data backs it.
Right. So, John, go back one. Okay, yeah, keep going. I'm sorry, I thought you went too fast for me. So, I said this last year, and I'll say it again, we ask for the increase in the budget, we ask for you to support us when it comes to town meeting, we ask you to support your children, our students, because it's the right thing to do. We shouldn't be begging, we shouldn't be each year being here saying, "Geez, we need more, we need more." We should just have it, because these are our kids. They're your children, they're our students, and all of our kids. And it takes a village to raise a child. We hope, and I hope that I can say that you believe in us, because we do believe in you, and we certainly believe in your children. It is great to be a Viking, but we ask that if you have any questions, and I did held up, I held up Ellen because I prefer that the school committee members be up on stage so they're looking at you, and so that they can discuss in open about this budget, and that you can ask them questions directly, and I'm sure that they have more information or they would like to give some of their opinions about the budget and where they believe we are as a school district. Or they, so, but we gave you some information, we gave you some links to websites, ClearGov, our school report card, it's important to go on to this website. Dr. Williams receives this information from the state, discusses it with the state, makes sure that she understands where the material's coming from, where we are ranked, or how the classification and identifications come from. She discussed this with the principals over last week. They received the letter from Dr. Williams' office, I believe, yesterday, and today you should have received it from your principals. If you haven't yet, I'm sure you'll receive it by the morning, but I know that all the principals were in UDL training, and one principal is out of district at professional development training, at his own professional development today. So, but this is important stuff right here. How do we help the growth in academic achievement and social-emotional wellness for each child? That's very important. If you don't understand any of that, we didn't put Gina's name up there, but Dr. Williams, if you have any questions for Dr. Williams, it's GWilliams@EBPS.net. If you have any questions or concerns about the finances, as you know, I am the fiduciary of the district, but I work very closely with John Shea, who is our business, our district business administrator. You can certainly email both of us at any time, or have, or make an appointment to visit me, or I'll meet you for coffee, or call me on the telephone, Barbara will put you right in. It's, this is important. There's a reason that communities and school districts have a budget hearing to certify the budget, because it's important. Every district, every community, the largest piece of the pie is the school district. Roads are important. Making sure that if a fire is in your home, or you need an ambulance, the fire department and safety personnel is extremely important. Making sure that we're safe, making sure that on a domestic violence call, that the police are available, those things are important, but so are schools. We need to stop taking schools for granted, and stop looking up from third from the bottom of our PPE here in East Bridgewater, and start to look in a different direction, that we're all equal and our students deserve more. I thank you for coming out tonight, we'll, we're going to hit the stage right now, the school committee will hit the stage, and they'll entertain any questions, and certainly Dr. Williams and I will, and of course, John Shea. But please, ask any question that you will, but it is important that you were here tonight, and I thank all of each and every one of you, thank you. So, I guess as the school committee takes their seats, on behalf of myself and Dr. Gina Williams and John Shea, my faculty, staff, and the students of East Bridgewater, that I would ask that the school committee help us to certify the 2020 school funding this evening at $20,879,895.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Legault, and Dr. Williams, and Mr. John Shea, thank you for that presentation, we appreciate it. At this time, I would ask if anyone from the audience has any questions or comments or anything? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, it's hard to see. Sure. Could you just state your name?
Yep. Is this one on? Hello? Oh, it is. A little awkward.
Thank you.
There you go. So, Andrew Rankin, 361 Summer Street, have two daughters in the school system, one at Mitchell, one at Central. So, just thank you for the presentation, this was absolutely eye-opening to me. I definitely will take this home and crunch some of the data in my mind. But a couple of things that I've been reading about, hearing about, noticing, and like, I'd like some clarification on, even tonight, it's evident that just one area of impact we've seen is the social and mental wellness of our students. Clearly, that was an initiative being undertaken immediately in conjunction with the PE and the health, et cetera. We know that it's a need, but on here, I know it says fiscal year 20 increase for what and why. One of the bullet points is the three social workers, but my understand, my understanding is that they're actually part-time, and that we do not have full-time, and I've learned this recently, adjustment counselors who specifically can be on-site and directly, you know, address students' needs. Also with that, with this, I got to be honest, like, my, my mind was blown by the one-fifth of students that have missed 18 days or longer at the high school, that my jaw almost hit the floor, I had no idea. And so, I'm seeing this massive need immediately in front. I don't know what percent increase would cover such a service to employ it immediately, like, to add to this budget. So, that's one question. The second question is relating to the advanced placement classes. I've heard lots of chatter about this. Are we removing classes? That's the first question, right, but we certainly aren't adding, though, I think, so...
So, the makeup, the makeup within the school department now is there's school adjustment counselors, and we have school psychologists. But to meet the needs of students, obviously, you need many more bodies than the two that currently exist at the lower levels, and guidance counselors here at this level. So, we're looking to bring graduate clinicians into the school district through a collaborative, and they would not be full-time, they would spend a couple of days a week, each of them. So, we would get a full week worth of a social worker, but not all three full-time. That's a real cost-effective way for us to get that additional mental health service within the school district without incurring the cost of what it would typically be to hire people within the school district. So, certainly, that is one piece, but we need to build that capacity. So, this would just be a starting point for us to address some of the needs that we have, you know, potentially be able to better service some of the students that we haven't been able to service because of the level of need that they've had, and having to outsource that, that maybe capturing that money back in the district will then allow us to increase that support in district. Does that cover that piece for the social-emotional? I wasn't sure if there was another piece. So, it would be the cost of a salary, I believe, year one is about $48,000 for one, and that's with, which would probably be unheard of without having a master's degree. With a master's degree, it would be, it'd be more than that. Correct, correct. And the cost that's being incurred is really the oversight for them to be overseen by a certified licensed social worker. So, we're paying that cost of the oversight, because obviously, as graduate students, they're not being paid, this is a requirement for them to fulfill their obligations in schooling, so...
They're not, they're not active, they're not, themselves, fully licensed, in other words, right?
Right, they need this component to finish.
Isn't it even that they've gotten their education, their hours?
Right, to get their licensure.
[inaudible]
Yes.
And in a, in a, in a perfect world, what would we be looking for, for the size of our body at the junior, senior high school?
In a, in a perfect world... I would say we'd be looking at two full-time. I can't, I can't speak to that.
But two for two?
I would say splitting between, you know, seven through nine, 10 through 12, one social worker per grouping.
This is the first time I saw this number, and, and for no other reason than it just became available. And had I seen that number before, I'm not sure I would have backed off on the mantra of the need for adjustment counselors or licensed mental health professionals, or everyone, however.
Teresa, you're talking about the absences?
Yes, the 20%. That is appalling to me, and I'll be honest with you, my kid is part of that number because we have amazing guidance staff here, but they are not trained in mental health, they're trained in guidance. The mental health challenges facing the students in all grade levels, not just here in East Bridgewater, but in every other district across the board, is enormous. The social pressures, the social media pressures, the anxiety that results, the opioid crisis that affects families, it is driving our kids to much more serious mental health pressures. I am going to ask, having seen that number, that everybody on this board consider increasing their budget by $100, $25,000, $150,000, which can easily, if we just reduce Mr. Samia's transfer of capital of five years, seven, four years, be funded to get these mental health professionals on staff. That number is appalling to me, and we cannot continue to understaff in that area, other problems are going to be created. And if we're not catching them, there's nobody at the Mitchell School, and we do not have a licensed mental health professional commissioner, if we don't catch them, we're going to lose them by the time we get up to campus.
So, there is not a reduction in AP courses. This year, an AP chemistry class was added, looking at adding advanced placement psychology next year. As far as, and maybe the inaccuracies is in social studies, right now, we have two AP US History, Part One and Part Two, that students typically take as a 10th grade, a US History, AP US History One, and then as a junior, typically AP US History Two. A lot of districts have already made this shift, and East Bridgewater is looking to condense that to one AP US History class so that we can add a second AP, which would be AP European History. So, not reducing the numbers, but exchanging, instead of having two parts, condensing that and making a little bit more robust and rigorous as one AP US History class with an AP European class.
Is there a [inaudible] to that, or projected?
So, the other piece that will play into this is looking at the schedule, and how the schedule would be different to accommodate teachers being able to teach more blocks.
Did you ask one or two, and each has an AP? Are we getting rid of one, one or two, or do I misunderstand?
So, so it's Part One and Part Two, and it would, it would all be condensed into one year of curriculum for AP US History.
And then the kids would take...
AP Europe, they would, I'm sorry, what was that?
Do we have the US History One right now, AP?
In, typically, in 10th grade, students would take that, and it would be at the end of their second year of that, that they would take the advanced placement test.
So, I'm still not clear. AP, we normally have, right now, we have AP push one...
Yes.
...and AP two.
Right.
Free Columbia, have the, the [inaudible] or something, and then we can start something on ahead. Which one of those two are we going to draw, or are we going to condense them both into one AP over all AP bus, and then by test, will they take?
So, it would be the same test, there's not two tests that the students are taking right now, they're taking one test after the second year of the course.
And, I'm sorry, you also mentioned, next year, we're thinking of adding AP site?
That's one thing that Mr. Duffy has expressed, that they're looking into an advanced placement psychology course.
[inaudible]
This current school year. And we'll make sure that we have more specific details for even upcoming school committee meetings. This is still all in the planning phases, so I don't want to be too premature with my comments.
Hi, Corinne McCarthy, I have two daughters, one at Central School and one at the Mitchell. Just, again, I'm new, well, I've been here for four years or so, but new to the school and new to getting information on, you know, what's going on at the high school. A couple of concerns that have come to me is the knee... A couple of concerns that have come to me is the NEASC action plan, being on that retroactive and not, and almost not being accredited. Clearly, that's a concern for me with a third grader. So as far as like the high school courses and what is offered, I also hear that kids have a study in their day or redoing electives. Programming and coming up with the new programs and new courses, I think, is so important for our kids. It's so important for the teachers to grow. And then my other thing that I heard is department chairs. There's no department chairs putting together this new programming. That's a lot. That's a lot. I think that is where I'm nervous as we proceed, you know, to high school and to all of these things that, and I know it's not your fault, but I want to help. I want to get there somehow and be here to get our town on our side to give us more money. Because where is the money? We need it. So I just wanted to say my concerns of why I'm here and how important it is to me.
Well, thank you for your concerns. And I just, first of all, you're not falling on deaf ears. Department heads, you need leaders in different disciplines. We do have K through twelve lead teachers and facilitators. We have a K through twelve technology facilitator right now, or pre-K through twelve technology. We have a K through, pre-K through twelve curriculum instructional facilitator, or curriculum facilitator. But we need more. We need more in those leadership roles. Those department head positions could possibly be, come in a contractual negotiation discussion this year. The district is not opposed to having those positions. The district is not opposed to discussing those and what those mean to have for department heads and to lead departments. But when we didn't have department heads, it was financially driven at that time and we needed to redesign what was happening. That's all. It is not the district's position not to have people in those types of leadership roles.
It's just so important as you look at curriculum and you go through the process. And I'm a department head myself in another district, so I know what I do just for physical education, health and wellness, like every single day.
I agree.
So I couldn't imagine what ELA and math and every, that's where I'm concerned. It's a lot.
And each silo has its, it's so different. You know, math is different than science and science is different than physical education and phys ed is different than English. And yes, we do need leadership roles. However, when we began this, when we began starting to redesign and rebuild the district four years ago to get back in here, we had to redesign the way we were doing things. I think we're at that time that we could possibly start pushing them in. At the high school, we do have seventh and eighth grade team leaders and nine through twelve facilitators in each of the areas. However, those positions need to be looked at and need to be designed, exactly what you're talking about for department heads. So I certainly entertain the question. It's not going on deaf ears.
Okay. And then there's the other part about the studies and the repeat elective courses? Well, it's only what I've heard. I mean, I have a third grader, but...
I don't, listen, I wish that, I wish that, you know, every student was, had something to do every period. I don't, we are looking at a new schedule. We are looking at different ways to make sure that students are provided opportunity and access across the board.
Right. But that falls from programming, you know?
Yes. And that's right.
Coming up with those electives.
And you also need a schedule that can support programming. If the schedule doesn't allow for enough classes or enough offerings to go on, or you don't have enough faculty to do so, then you can't run an opportunity of access schedule. Right now, we are looking at, or Mr. Duffy, I should say, the high schools, the junior senior high schools, looking at a new schedule. They've been out, they, years ago, they went out and they've looked at different schools. It was never implemented. At this point, we need to look at another schedule. We need to look at something different. I think Mr. Duffy, going into his third year, has seen that. He has discussed it with his faculty. He's been out to different districts. A couple of districts were here, speaking with him in the last couple of weeks. And I know that he's gone over to Abington. He's looked at West Bridgewater. He's spoken to Plymouth North and Plymouth South. I know that he was at a principal's meeting today and will be asking questions on what others are doing. Change is difficult, but I think that to entertain more class offerings and to really get, to use Dr. Williams' words tonight, a robust schedule for students. This is what this is about. It needs to be a student-friendly schedule. It needs to support students regardless of what area that they're going in or where they're going, whether it's advanced placement, honors, college prep, or a student that is in an inclusionary environment. It should be accessible to all. So we are not opposed to that. We are looking into every area that we can. I can only speak to what I know, but in watching Dr. Williams, she is meeting with the principals on a daily basis just for this.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to support it as much as we can.
And obviously teachers. We need teachers. We need funding. We need people.
Yep.
So for like college prep versus...
Oh, we have three. College prep, honors and advanced placement.
Honors.
It's usually three.
Honors.
I think. But yeah.
Ms. McCarthy, thank you for coming up. And what I would suggest you do and what you spread to other school families is show up at town meeting. It's so important. We had to basically outvote the number that the selectmen put on the warrant last year. There are elements, I hope they're not, I hope they're just elements, not the entirety of the selectmen and some of the other town bodies that are perfectly happy with the status quo. And I think everyone up here, we don't always agree on everything, but everyone would agree that the status quo is not good enough. So hook the word out, get out to town meeting.
The reality is, John, to your point, that there is a lack of prioritization or an expression of what this town values versus what it doesn't when a community stands up and says everybody gets the same. That lacks any foresight. It lacks any vision. It lacks any planning. And it lacks the town, the people, the residents, who are the people that set this budget, the opportunity to prioritize what they value in this community. And every department has value. Do not get me wrong. I am not saying that they're not. But education has been undervalued for too long.
Which has put us in a hole. Literally. It's put us in a hole because now...
I mean, you wouldn't be at the bottom of the list if education was a priority. And we need to newer, I've only been here five years, so I can relate to your almost shock factor at hearing some of the things, because I am a recent mover into town myself. It's the people who have moved in like you who need to now set the priorities and values for this community through getting a town meeting, questioning budgets, modifying budgets if they deem so fit. Anybody who sits in that town meeting floor has the right to vote yes or no and has a right to ask any question they want and to amend a number on a budget if they don't agree with it. But I've sat through five, six, seven town meetings since I've been here and I see millions and millions of dollars spent without a question being asked. And I came from a community where our town meeting, where it's a much bigger community, but our town meeting ran four nights because the community cared and the community asked questions. And we need people to start doing that here in East Bridgewater if we want to see our school system improve properly for our kids.
Definitely. One other thing, the NEASC action plan, as far as what we have to do moving forward, and I know it's a ten-year program, a ten-year plan, but what, is that going to be public information or...
Mr. Duffy just drafted his corrective action plans and he worked with his faculty to do that. So there were categories and the standards that we were deficient in and we needed some corrective action done in. Those standards, he blocked out. He has addressed each of the standards and he has sent that to the NEASC accreditation committee, who was here. They'll send it back and say, yes, if this is your course of action, we agree with you, take these steps going forward. Once he gets agreement and they are okayed by the NEASC accreditation committee, they'll send it back and then he will publish that.
Okay. And then you'll have the ten years to when they come back? That's how, okay.
I think he has three years to get the first and then the five, and then there's a mid-cycle. Because of where you're in corrective action in some areas, they will do the three-year, then the five-year, mid-year, and then the ten. Yes.
For the people at home who might not know what NEASC stands for, can you tell them what that program is?
New England Accreditation of Secondary Schools and Colleges, right? New England Accreditation. It accredit, what it does is it tells us that we are online with curriculum and instruction, if we are doing what students need to go on to college, if we have done everything that we possibly can to help our faculty with their instructional strategies. It's really a, what it is, it's a comprehensive evaluation system to see if what we're doing at the high school is what is needed at the high school for students to be successful, to have success. And for students to be, or for faculty to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Pellegrino, I should have a quick comment about AP, specifically AP US History. You have in Mississippi, Ms. Dugan, the, one of the best teachers you could ever hope to employ, who has an eighty percent success rate under the, in terms of students getting credit on the AP US History exam, under the current model. I think it'd just be crazy to change that model and risk that success, because that's huge. That's a huge number. Eighty percent of students getting threes, fours and fives. I just also have a question. Are we sure we're not losing any AP science classes? Are you sure those are all still remaining? Because I, I don't know. It might be...
If you know something that I know, don't know, then you would probably, then you'd have more information than I.
I'm just curious.
From my knowledge, not at this point. The, Mr., I do know that Mr. Duffy is meeting with Dr. Williams in the morning just about this, about AP courses. You were saying, Mrs. Siddiqui?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you said Mr. Siddiqui. We do have data on AP courses that I want Mr. Duffy to share with the community and with his high school staff. And I know that he has shared it with his high school staff and I know that we need to share it. AP is great, but we have to make sure that all students and all of our instructional strategists and all of our instructional teachers in those classrooms are really getting that info. You need to see some of the data from our AP courses. And eighty percent is good. Are they getting college credit? Are they passing? Are they receiving fours or fives? And those are areas that we are looking at. But at this time, if you know that we're not, if you know that we're eliminating AP courses, you would know more than I, because I don't know that for sure. But I do know that the social studies and the history curriculum that we're moving towards, we're following the DESI frameworks and other school districts keep this US One and US Two in a one-year framework and then go on to something else. So that's, it is uncomfortable and change is difficult, but I think that that's the reasoning behind the move to a one-year US One and Two together and then going into European History.
Thank you.
That's a massive amount of information in US One and Two. That's why it's normally broken up into two years. How is that going to be put into one year? And second, do any of the proposed changes, do you foresee any teachers' positions or teachers themselves being let go because of those changes?
At this time, no. I would have more information. Mr. Duffy was at a professional development today and I think, and then it moved on to the afternoon and I think he had some other things this evening for his, in his PD work. So I would have to say that I could come back next Thursday and give you more information on this. I know that he is meeting with Dr. Williams in the morning just about AP and what this means. But I do know that most, many schools have moved to a one-year program in US One and Two, because it is one test. What the standard, what are the standards that we need to cover for US One and Two according to the DESI curriculum standards and frameworks and then going on to European? And, but I can certainly come back next Thursday and give you more information.
But you don't foresee any cuts or teacher cuts or position cuts?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else had their hand up. Sorry, nice and clear. Somebody back up.
It's hard to see with the lights gleaming in our eyes.
Rob Lyons, 507 Bridge Street. Just to kind of carry on what Mr. Pellegrino said, in the seventeen-year-old and younger set, there is a concern about AP classes being cut. That was, it's not just from one, it's from a group of peers in that age bracket. So that's, where that's coming from, I don't know, but it's hot out in the street and it's running rampant, so...
If I may, I'm just hearing about it. It takes a little bit longer to get to me, I guess. I don't know where this is coming from. I have not seen a course, we have not seen the program of studies. Dr. Williams has not come in with Mr. Duffy to present anything to me at this time. She'll meet with, Dr. Williams will meet with Mr. Duffy, then she'll meet with Mr. Duffy. I just want to show you the, where we're at. She'll meet with Mr. Duffy and then Karen Clifford, our Director of Guidance, and then they'll come in to me and discuss the program of studies, why, if there was a switch being made, why we're going into this different direction. I don't know where this information's coming from. I don't know, if I were, unfortunately, I think that sometimes we talk and unfortunately there may be misinformation out there. Right now, I have not, I don't believe, Dr. Williams has given any okay and I have not given any okay and the school committee hasn't even seen the program of studies yet.
Just wanted to let you know that it's out there hot and heavy. The other thing is, you know, it's easy to sit in a chair and point his slides. And if any of this was easy, we'd all be doing it. You and I got here about the same time, four years ago, inherited a school system that wanted to be more of a bus transportation revenue stream than educating and you had your hands full. And over the four years, I, my kids, we've met some great teachers, some great people in the school system, but I can't, it's, everybody here believes the same thing, that we're not doing you and them justice. So I don't know if, I saw one, I saw one individual that's running for school committee here. Are any of the other candidates here tonight? If not, oh, there we are. Okay, great. And if there's, I think there's another one, hopefully he's watching at home. But is he here?
I can't see out in the audience, so I can't tell you.
But maybe he's watching at home. But my point is, is that we, oh, Mr. Babcock, he's running as well. There's an election. So hopefully by candidate night, some of the candidates will have a proposal, some hard data, some numbers that will equate to results, like say, if we're going to increase by X amount, a percentage point, a dollar amount, even a basis point, this is what we can do and this is how the needle's going to be moved. So, and my final question is, there are other stakeholders in government that impact all this. What is, and I hope this doesn't put anybody in a difficult spot, but what are the real roadblocks in this town to get that number moved to where it should be?
George Samia. George Samia, without question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Jennifer Kitchen on 946 Central Street. Been trying to collect my thoughts pretty much throughout your whole entire presentation and I just would like to challenge the school committee, the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen to step their game up, to raise the bar regarding the level of professionalism, dealing with each other, treating each other with respect. If we show that to each other, then maybe the town will come forward and actually do what they need to do to bring the... what they need to do to bring the town to the level that it needs to be at. Unfortunately, the town doesn't have a lot of money. We are a bedroom community, we do not have a huge commercial base. We need everyone to work together in order to make this town better and to change the culture. So I challenge all of you, there's not many people sitting here, it's really pathetic tonight. Hopefully, people are watching on TV. But if you want to invest in your community, you need to learn and educate yourself. Come to finance committee meetings, go to Board of Selectmen's meetings, come to school committee meetings. Nothing's going to change unless people do that.
Thank you.
It varies. The finance committee meetings vary because there are so many different departments. So, yeah. But we do, you, the departments are going to present in front of the Board of Selectmen as well. The town needs to educate themselves as to where we're at.
I agree.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments from the audience?
I have one more question.
Sure.
So for the EBPS curriculum review cycle, so I know that there was an original number of 3% that was trimmed down to 2.75%, I'm sorry, 3.54% trimmed down to 2.75%. I do personally think that it's, it's, it's sort of silly that there's a universal standard across all departments in the town, without taking into account the individual department needs. So to arbitrarily pick a 2%, please get your budget, budget in below this, doesn't make logical or rational sense, in any sense of the word. So I do appreciate what was said just prior about working together, but I think it, it is a, a universal request for the other town departments, as well as our town leaders to work together in that respect. But this ties into this, because, you know, by, by trimming down to 2.75%, for the needs assessment, for the wellness, PE, health, and, and guidance, you know, we're in the pilot purchase stage now. I think you mentioned the average cost of these type of purchases is about $150,000, like, across the district. But was that compromised in some way based on the needs assessment, where the needs were shown to be A, B, C, D, E, but we're not actually coming through on the funding to meet those needs, specifically to the wellness? And I think also, you mentioned the needs assessment for social studies and language is underway, but is that also going to be, you know, like, this is a domino effect? So next year, it's going to be even more difficult to meet that one. And then art, music, tech ed, I mean, we're not going to see anything from that for four years. I mean, it's, that's ludicrous in my mind. You know what I mean? So I think if you could maybe speak to some of that.
So with the curriculum review cycle, it's more of the, the tangibles, you know, the resources, the training, the, the curriculum materials, any resources teachers need. So it's not talking about staffing increases that are needed to fulfill some of those courses that we want to be offering the students. So when you're looking at the curriculum review cycle, that wouldn't change too substantially. Really, we'd be looking at building capacity within the staffing to support those areas, as opposed to buying additional resources and curriculum materials. There was something you just said.
So then, then, thank you for that. That makes sense. So, in other words, the review cycle itself is not due to maybe a funding situation as much as, so then the question, the question would be, for the pilot purchase, for the wellness, you know, in this, in this school year, basically, and the next year for social studies in 1920, is there a portion of, of either of these that are not being met?
Right.
Because we've had to bring it down to the 2.75?
Right. So, so with the, the curriculum review, you know, obviously, if we were able to offer more, then our, our need for those materials and resources would increase. So it would go up, but not substantially. It would be more the cost of, of being able to hire staff to teacher, to teach, to lower class size and to teach more course offerings. As far as that, the last part of it, with the PE and the health, we're going to, you know, not allocate money right away for that, knowing that the frameworks are going to be finalized probably in the fall, and we're starting on, maybe taking some of that money and putting it towards social studies, so that next year, we're not looking to fund PE, health, social studies, and foreign language.
So what's, what's that amount that we're talking about?
So for, for the, for just the social emotional piece, in this review cycle, it's more about, probably about $50,000, and that's more to bring programming in, you know, there's lots of resources out there that are low cost or no cost, bringing agencies in, community services in, that offer these types of trainings and train the trainer models. But there's also, we'd be looking at curriculum materials as well. So even though the review cycle is for wellness, this, the, the social worker piece is not because we're in this review cycle of, of health and wellness, it's because of the need that we see in the, the day-to-day behaviors of students.
Yeah, understood. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So we initially, like we've already heard tonight, we, we initially submitted a 3.5% budget. We're now submitting a 2.75 budget, and the town says that they don't have the money to give us for extra things. In order for us to, excuse me, in order for us to expand our budget and expand our services, we need more money from the town. The school district has a strategic plan, the town needs a strategic plan, the town currently does not have a strategic plan. I wanted to ask, so tonight, our number to certify is $20,879,895, and Teresa had brought something up earlier, and before we certify our budget, I wanted to have the rest of the committee chime in.
I would ask, you can amend, I'd, I'd ask that John Shay come up to the table before we amend, just so that he's available for, to sharpen his pencil a little bit, just to make sure that we know where the percentage is. I don't think the percentage really matters as much as it does getting, getting two more adjustment counselors and adjustment counselor. I just wanted to have John give us an actual number, so that we could have an actual number to go for.
Liz, to me as well, I would suggest, we had a discussion last night about.
Executive session, yeah.
Yeah. Doing just what is being suggested. I don't think this number is high enough, I'm going to leave it at that, but I am going to vote for this number, the 2.75.
And, and John, I, I will, I think last night, I would have gone and talked in that room, but having seen that attendance number, and knowing from the number of parents I talked to about the level of social anxiety and stuff that exists in the district, and seeing what is to be for attendance rates, I can't, I, I can't, I'm beating those adjustments.
I agree to 100%, we're in a, we're in an incredibly awkward position, though, I don't think we should change that.
But I philosophically disagree.
So we could always amend on the town floor also, if we vote.
And I am happy to do that. I am very happy to do that. I am very happy to do that. I, you know, I'm happy to do it there, I'm, I'm fine with this number tonight.
I'll, I'll back you if you do it on the floor, town meeting.
But I am not, I am not, I will tell you now, I'm going to let that number stay at the town meeting, because it is atrocious.
Can we have John Shay? Do you have any, any figures or numbers or anything to let us know about?
Well, two additional social workers, and we're just talking two at the high school, we're not talking Mitchell?
Well, I would think one is one, and we're not getting remotely where we need to be, but at least one is one. But it, it, it doesn't matter, I mean, what, an adjustment counselor is about $60,000 to $70,000.
So you're looking at adding about $130,000.
For two.
For two.
Yeah, so I said 150, so I was pretty close. I've done my homework on this issue.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Been on the school committee for a while. It's very challenging, very rewarding. I'm also, obviously, a town citizen. I understand that we have to work within the framework of the town. There isn't just money on a shelf somewhere to go get, and the only solution that's going to work in the long run is for us to work collaboratively with the town leaders. The town leaders have put this, the town of East Bridgewater in a good place financially. We are solid, great. That didn't happen by accident. I understand that, I respect that, I don't want to change that. What I want to do is vote this budget and open up constructive dialogue, so that we are not at this point next year. That's our, as I see it, that's our responsibility, to work with the town, to have meaningful, productive, positive conversation, and not be at conflict with each other. We're all citizens, we all have responsibilities. In this case, most of us don't have children in the school systems anymore. But you know what? When we were literally in school ourselves, the town members voted money, spent money, raised taxes, so that we were educated, we continue as, as a civilized society, we accept that. It's part of the tenants of, of the country that we live in, certainly the state that we live in. And so, I'm, all, we have a responsibility, as all of us sitting on the board here are advocates for the students. That's our role and responsibility. And by saying that, we also understand there is an overall structure to the town, we have to work within that. What we're trying to do is to jump up and down, wave our hands, and say, for too many years, we've been at the bottom of the per pupil spending. Some people don't like that number, but it's a reality that we have spent the least amount of money educating our children than virtually any of the other 320 towns in the state. I know we're not the richest town, but we're also not the poorest town either. And it is a, a serious task at hand that we have to evaluate where we are, where we're going, and, and do it in a mindful way, so that the children this year, next year, the generation to come, get the best that we have to offer. We're not going to be spending the most in the, in the state by any means, but we have to do whatever we can to put enough funding behind the system that they get a quality education, because that lays the groundwork for the rest of their lives. I take that, that responsibility very seriously, I know everyone on the board does, and so we have to be that advocate. And if it's painful to talk about, we're talking about money, but we're also talking about children and their education. I value my children's education, I value the education that I got and the benefit I had, and all that went before me, that people, townspeople got together and said, look, we're going to do this, we're going to make sure our kids are educated. We need more help, we need more funding, we need to give the administration the kind of support they need, so that our students are the best we can possibly help to make them. Hard to argue with that, I, I would think. But, so, I, I'm not an advocate of adding to the budget now, the budget's already higher than the town leadership wants it to be, I respect that, but I also respect our role in trying to make it as best we can make it. So rather than adding money to it now, I would say, I'd like to invest the time and effort in opening that dialogue, so that, before we get to next year, we're in much better shape. Sorry, you had a question?
Can I say something to that point, Liz?
Sure.
Because I agree with everything you said, and you said it far more eloquently than I ever could. However, last year, was it last year or the year before, for the last three years, we have negotiated, made agreements, we waited for the ORC report that we thought was going to be the safe here to show where this was all going to kind of be allocated, and we're fixed. Nothing came of the ORC report in terms of changes in finance. We made an agreement, shook hands on an agreement on the town meeting floor with the other department heads, that we're going to form a budget task force, and we were going to begin planning and projecting and prioritizing. That never gets it. The meetings happened, but they were futile, nothing came of it. I was actually banned from one of those meetings, even though I'm an elected official, and I was there at Liz's request. And this year again, we say, we gave them a projection for the last two years that showed where we would be at this point, doing nothing more, just where we think we were based on our contracts. And we're again being told, no, can't have that. Despite the fact that I have seen no projection from any other budget line in this town, except for maybe debt, because that's pretty fixed and doesn't change. So I think we have done everything we can to try to work collaboratively, and we just keep getting pushed back, and pushed back, and pushed back, which is why I continue to advocate for the residents to take control back, because that's the only way it's going to happen. It is not going to happen, and, and I've had these conversations with Mr. Samia, and I could not agree with you more, Gordon's conservative approach served this town very, very well. However, it comes a time when you have $9 million in reserve and another four or five million in the capital reserve, and you have to say, okay, do we need to keep putting five years of bond payments in there, or can we reduce to four to invest in our community again? And that's where I am. It's time to reinvest in the community and not the millions of dollars in reserves, because it's, we're not asking to take out of it, which is, they don't have to, or at least I don't. I mean, I see towns of much bigger size with far less reserves.
Ellen, oh, I'm sorry.
And I, I, I just think that we have tried everything we can to work collaborative, from the ORC to the budget task force, or whatever we ended up calling it, and nothing has changed, nothing has come from fruition. We've got the memo that says you get 2% and that's the end. And that is not the role of the financial administrator, it, it is not what you see in any form-thinking society to say, everything stays the same, and everybody gets the same, and that's that. And, and until that changes, or we educate people enough to understand, my needs have changed, we're going to be back here doing the same thing year in and year out. And I don't, I don't have the stomach to sit here and do whatever, year in and year out. I mean, I think Gordon said it, as well as anybody could say it, but I also think we've already done a lot of what Gordon thinks needs to happen, and it, and we're not getting anywhere. So the definition of insanity is to continue to do the same thing over and over and get the same thing, expect a different result. The results haven't changed in any of the four budget years I've been on this committee, and I don't see them changing under the current setup of our town government at this point, for lack of a better term.
Without having us mobilizing voters to come in, and that vote was happening last year.
Exactly. I think, and, and I think a lot of it is, as newer people come to town, I mean, I came from a town government, but, Rob, didn't you live in Somerville or something?
Originally.
Originally? So for some people moving here from city forms, this is also new to them, that they don't even know they have a say.
Mr. Ly, is it Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, just, it was everything that Teresa just said, and, you know, agree with it. How, how much more collaborative can you get when an organization gives you visibility to a budget three years ago? It just, it, it is, the, the level, it's just, it's frustrating. So I, I guess a change has to come at the ballot box and through other venues, or through other elements of town government.
Well, it's incredibly difficult when you try to work with the town at different levels year after year, and you're lied to, to your face. Procedural tricks, legal and illegal, are used to do anything that you have to patrol a situation.
Probably, it's supposed to be all on the same team.
You'd like to think so, but that's not the case, apparently.
I, Ellen, I just wanted to, so this evening, we've heard, and I just charged John with some, to give me some information and to give the committee some information, we heard about adjustment counselors, we've heard about advanced placement classes, lead teachers, department heads. So I asked John to put that together, because those were the three areas that people had brought up. This is what we do between John and I on a daily. This is what we do between John and I on a daily basis, as Dr. Williams continues to lead the instructional talk and continues to walk in and out at this time of year and say, this is what we need. So I just want you to hear how, this is why we came to 2.75, because I want you to hear that this was when we began. These were some areas that were in our original budget when we began, because Dr. Williams and I begin together and we, we build this, get to the peak of the mountain, and then we have to start to cut a little bit. But I just wanted John to be able to go over each of those areas as the best that he could without having a contract in his hand, but I think he knows it verbatim by now. But this is where we did begin, so if you could just...
So if, if, if we add a couple of social workers, you're looking at adding about $130,000 to our request. We heard that there's a lack of AP classes. If we add two AP teachers and make an estimate for supplies and expenses, you're looking at adding another $155,000. Lead teachers, based upon contracts around the area, you're looking at adding another
Those are stipends.
Lead teachers.
Department.
Department heads.
You know, I mean, we've also heard that maybe there isn't enough staff at Central or Mitchell because of classes, kids being in study. You add two teachers there, that's another $96,000. So you're looking at going from a budget of $559,000 to a budget of about $1,010,000.
For an increase.
For an increase, or almost 5.5%. And those are just the ideas from the few people?
But they're not, they're not ideas that we did not have or that we didn't begin with, because department heads have been on our radar, and we're looking at it. Adjustment counselors have certainly been there for social workers, for the social emotional awareness and for the peace, for helping students tackle life. But that's where we're at, and, and to be, I, to work with the town and to work with what we have, we tried to do the best that we can, and we brought that budget down and we streamlined it. And we tried very hard to keep this student oriented. It's very difficult.
Those numbers roughly a million, that brings it up to about 5 to 1. Yeah, I figure, yeah, a little under 5, a little under 5.
Is that, Liz, will you all set with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we certify the school committee's FY '20 budget in the amount of $20,879,895.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Seconded by Rob.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did Rob and Hazel vote too? I couldn't see. Okay, thank you. Did you, did you get that, Mrs. Benner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you certify, it's 5 to 1.
It's 5 to 1, yes. A 5 to 1 certification. Before I ask to adjourn this meeting, I would just like to reiterate, I would ask that you all please come to town meeting on June 10th to support our school district. And the only other thing I can think of that you could do is email your selectmen, email your finance committee, make your wishes known to our town officials, and we appreciate your support.
And I want my dad to come in and...
Sure.
Educate yourself about how town government works. Understand you are right as a, as an open town meeting member. You have a right to change, to speak, to do plenty of things. Everybody in this town should educate themselves. We have what, how many registered votes? We have about 7,500? And a lot of people get 200 at town meeting?
If one entire class's parents showed up, we could get anything passed.
And whether you're in support of the schools or not, I say that, no, I say that as a person who loves this form of government. It is the purest form of democracy there is, where you as an individual taxpayer has so much right in the decisions that are made and how your money is spent, how your bylaws are made. And people just don't take advantage of it. I, I think this is the purest form of government. I think everybody should exercise their rights as a resident and, and the ability to be a town meeting member and get involved. Because really, if the people who complain all the time actually showed up and fought for those changes, they would be happening. We can't do it with six of us and three selectmen and the 12 invaluable members of the finance committee who put in more hours this time of year than, you know, anybody should have to put in. They can't do it alone. We're a small number, but people who come out to town meeting can, and your voice can be heard.
Thank you, Teresa, and thank you, everyone. I would like to reiterate that this town needs a strategic plan, and I would like to thank this super, that, excuse me, the selectmen that are in attendance tonight. I see Carol Julius is here. I'm not sure that I see any, either of the other two selectmen. And I would like to thank the FinCom members that are in attendance. I see Jennifer Kitchenum, who got up to speak, and...
Melissa.
Melissa?
Melanie.
Melanie, sorry about that. It's so hard to see. Well, we appreciate your attendance, and thank you. And of course, thank the parents for, for coming. Without you, we need your support, so we appreciate it. At this time, I would take a motion to conclude this meeting, adjourn this meeting. Moved by John, seconded by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.